I'd like to call the meeting into order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission, March 26, 2019, meeting. We do have a quorum. First item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from February 26, 2019, regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
If there's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes pass. First item of business, site plan, Washitopia, requested by Civil and Environmental Engineering Services, LLC. Property located at 5486 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 18B, Group E, parcels 5.03 and 5.04. C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Washitopia Holdings, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is for the construction of a car wash facility. It would be on Murfreesboro Road, close to Walmart, but the opposite side of the street. It's actually across from Minerva Drive. And you see the empty lots there today. It is on C2 Highway Service, and this site plan shows the car wash site and the adjacent sites to the southeast. So this is an existing building. It's just metal construction. And they came before the planning commission last summer and were approved to renovate that building and turn it into new use. And so that building and site is in the pipeline. And then Lot 4 is the Laverne Retail Center, and it was also here last summer. And this would be a retail building that would run basically a long ways against this property line. And I think the planning commission had them to add some architectural details so that the facade on Murfreesboro Road would be a little bit more appealing. So anyway, back to the car wash. This is at the far end of this whole site, and they are requesting to build a building of 4,432 square feet. And the site total consists of 1.96 acres, so about two acres. It is in the Murfreesboro Streetscape District, and as such, they have submitted a materials board for you all. And they also have -- the elevations have been submitted. And I'm close in here on the site. So this is their detention pond. This is Murfreesboro Road. And the ingress egress is here. And then the main building is located here. And then these are all of the vacuums and, I believe, from the workshop. All of those are open to the public. Whether they get a car wash or not, I believe that's -- I'll let the applicant answer that, but I believe that was discussed at the workshop. All the technical items have been addressed, so there's none outstanding, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for staff from the board?
I think it was asked at the workshop about the driveway, if that could be expanded.
To the whiffs. Is there a representative here this evening for this project?
Mr. Chairman.
Is that a service road right there?
To address the question. This is a T-dot roadway, so really whatever T-dot gives you is what you get. So it was -- they could definitely go and ask, but T-dot usually doesn't change their minds, so.
Okay.
It's a pretty -- I would say with a fair degree of confidence, what they got is what they're going to get.
Is that a -- Adam, is that a service road where they enter and it goes down to the other properties?
That's correct. It's an interior roadway that's going to connect all -- well, it was formerly four parcels, but now three.
Would that be a named street or just a road or just a driveway?
It's just like a private drive, really would be the best description.
Naming address for the record, sir.
Just a benchmark, 23 Allenville, Tennessee, 317216.
Thank you. You want to address the entrance whiffs for us first?
I was going to pretty much say the same thing. And I -- we did bring the material cords and, you know, the -- I just wanted to take a view of it. We've dropped out a little, so you can come up.
All right. You want to just set that right in front of the podium? We'll take a look at that.
The only ones that are not on here are brick and split base blocks. I hear you all know what those look like. But if you happen to need those, I'll get my wet stuff mixed up.
Thank you, sir. And we had one or two other requests that had been made. Mr. Coats?
Yeah, I appreciate you on looking at the revisions of the drawing. Sheet 01.2 shows you did round the curve per our request on the exit. But if you could explain on sheet 1.2, it doesn't show the same format. So I'm just a little bit.
Sure. Ready? You think I understand.
Well, I maybe just -- if you could just come and take a look, I just want to -- it doesn't look right on this sheet, and I just want to make sure we understand the same bit. So we agree with this. Now, looks good, and I appreciate that. That's good. If you go to this sheet, it doesn't show the same curvature.
It's all the -- this is just a -- it's all the 50 to 50.
Okay. I'll just -- so what we're looking at here, gentlemen, is if you look at the two sheets, they're differing in the dimensions, and I just want to make sure that we understand that we want to go off sheet C.0, 0.2 versus C.1.2 because they are different.
Well, they are.
I'm just looking at it. It just looks a little different.
They are. It's just because of all the -- but yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Just for engineering, just to make sure that detention area is sufficient. We were satisfied that we're in good shape with that?
Yes, sir. They addressed all the comments I had for them, so every -- they did smooth out several curves on their interior roadways, widened the roads to 20 feet, so everything's good per fire and structural engineering practice.
Bring it. Question?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Welcome to Laverne.
Welcome to Laverne. That's right. Next item, site plan, Tennessee Valley Ice, requested by St. John Engineering. Property located on Mason Road, tax map 17, parcel 17, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Tennessee Valley Ice Company, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This applicant is Tennessee Valley Ice, which has a facility on Mason Road currently, and that facility was just opened, I think about 12 months ago, maybe 13 months ago. So they are requesting an addition to that existing building. The addition consists of 457 square feet, and the existing building is 6,880 square No other changes are being proposed to any of the existing parking or driveways, and all the technical items have been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
This is for staff. So the proposed receiver unit, are we totally satisfied that that's in a safe area without causing any aggravation?
From an engineering standpoint, it's an acceptable area.
And from the fire side, what's your thought? On that, we discussed the proposed receiver unit being on a cramped area. Did we take a look at that and make sure you're satisfied with that?
Yes, sir. We reviewed all that in the tech meeting, and everything was satisfactory.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
Will there be any redirection of water with the footers and everything?
No, it's a -- everything's already going to be on concrete. It's on a concrete pad, so it's going to go the same way it was always going.
Make a motion we accept.
I have submitted.
Yes, submitted.
A motion to accept is submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Number three, site plan, 177 Old Nashville Highway, requested by Womble and Associates. Property located on Old Nashville Highway, tax map 15M, parcel 7, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Hassan Al-Hajar. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This applicant is requesting site plan approval at 177 Old Nashville Highway, and it is currently vacant. And here in the image, it sits two properties off of Murfreesboro Road, but even though it's two properties off, it is in the Murfreesboro Road overlay district. So they have submitted architectural elevations and also a materials board tonight. It is on C2. All this area in red, so all the neighboring properties are C2. Across the street, it looks to be industrial, but here's another view of the site. Vacant. This is a strip retail center, so this is looking northwest toward Davidson County. And I believe Domino's Pizza is in that retail strip, some other businesses. It's another view, looking toward Old Nashville Highway.
So this is behind -- in front of Co-op?
It is down the road from Co-op a little bit.
Yes, sir. And this is when the sign.
Yeah, behind you. I guess across the railroad tracks.
That's when they requested the special exception for the auto repair. That sign was posted. So again, looking at the site plan, they're proposing four bays for vehicles that could hold two vehicles each, standard size, so that's eight. And then they're proposing office here in the front and then a storage area. And they have provided parking spaces along this area. They're all standard-sized parking spaces, and currently they're overparked, which is a good thing. They do have one ADA space here next to the front door of the office. And they're showing a 24-foot -- the driveway's 24 feet wide. And they are proposing a sidewalk, and that sidewalk's five feet wide, and you see it here. So they will be installing the sidewalk. And yeah, there's 24 spaces provided, but there's only eight required, so they've -- they're very, very much overparked. So all the other technical items have been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for staff? And representative for the project here this evening?
As I appreciate the engineering and the owner improving the beautification per our request, which they've done, they've made the changes. And so with that, I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept is submitted, but if we could, could you show us the material board, Mr. Womble? If you don't mind. Just so everybody gets to see it. And we have a motion to accept is submitted on the table? We'll entertain a second.
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Logan, item number four is deferred, correct?
Yes, sir.
On to item number five. Site plan, Lot 1 of Ritter Properties, requested by Huddleston Steel, property located at 101 LaSalle Court, tax map 14J, Group D, parcel 1. I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Ritter Properties Partners. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is on LaSalle Court. It's one of the Ritter properties, and this is Lot 1. So it's the corner lot at LaSalle and Sand Hill Road. They are proposing to build one building that would be 4,000 square feet, and the whole size of the lot is 17,080. And it is zoned I-1, which is the light blue area. So here's a photo of the corner lot, and it's vacant today. This is a cell tower in the distance. And then getting into the site plan, so they have an ADA space here and then two parking spaces to the north side of the building. And then they're proposing to do tar and chip surface on both sides, and that is consistent with the other buildings that have developed over the last couple of years. They've all done that as well. And you can see the landscaping is shown, and they are going to install a sidewalk on this Sand Hill side, but they will be utilizing fi and loo for the LaSalle Court side for the sidewalk. So I think there are very few technical items, and those have been addressed, so we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments?
Is there a reason on the fi and loo for not having a sidewalk on the frontage of the building?
Sand Hill Road has some sidewalk built on it already. LaSalle Court, every other building, if you go past it, has done fi and loo. So essentially, our sidewalk would dead-end until these buildings eventually fall down. So it was my recommendation, we simply put the sidewalk where the sidewalk is to keep it continuous.
At the main, the headway there with the townhomes and everything in the area that's jumped out there on Sand Hill, it's heavy foot traffic in that area now. I know it's light industrial, but the sidewalks.
The sidewalk was -- is going to be right here.
Along Sand Hill?
Along Sand Hill, Sand Hill Road side. The rest of the street does not have sidewalks, even the finished projects, correct?
Yes, in keeping with previous projects. And these parking lots are continuous, so this is all -- once these are finished, there'll be pavement all the way back through the rest of the lot. So if someone did want to walk to them, they're not walking in the grass.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item. Site plan, Lot 9 of Ritter Properties, requested by Huddleston Steel, property located at 112 LaSalle Court, tax map 14J, Group D, parcel 9. I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, property owned by DNA Partnership. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is also one of the Ritter properties. This is Lot 9. So same street, which is LaSalle Court, and go all the way to the end to the cul-de-sac, and it's the last lot on the right. See, right there where the red dot is. And this property, being at the end of the cul-de-sac, it does butt up to school board property, which is all this heavily treed area that you see. And then, of course, the school is quite a ways back, the existing school. But I think in all of staff's discussions, I don't think the school board has any immediate plans to do anything with their property. So similar design as the previous building, and here's the site plan. It's also a 4,000-square-foot building, and they have their parking here to the south side, and then some parking here in the front. And then you see the landscaping that's proposed around the cul-de-sac. And they're also proposing tar and chip, which is a dustless surface, just like the other properties. And for the sidewalk, they would be utilizing the fi and loo as well, like the other properties on LaSalle Court. And all the technical items have been addressed, and number one, which is in your report, has also been addressed. So that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
I make a motion we approve. That's submitted.
A motion to approve is submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item. Site plan, Lot 10 of Ritter Properties, requested by Huddleston Steel, property located at 110 LaSalle Court, tax map 14J, Group D, parcel 10. I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, property owned by DNA Partnership. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. And this is the neighboring property to the last item, so it's just south. And this is Lot 10 of the Ritter properties. And they're also proposing a building of 4,000 square feet, one-story. It's also zoned I-1, like the rest of the street, and there's a photo of the site. And they too will be utilizing the fi and loo for the sidewalk. And very similar to the other ones, they have proposed tar and chip on either side of the building. And then they have two spaces here for parking, and then it looks like their ADA space is over on the south side of the building. And there were no outstanding technical items, so we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments on this item? That will entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve and submit.
We have a motion to approve is submitted and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Number nine. Number eight has been deferred pending BOZA.
Yes, that's correct. If you all want to move the bond up.
Okay.
And then we can do the amendments to zoning after.
Perfect. We'll move on to number 11. Set bond amount for Mason Road Business Park subdivision of Lot 4, tax map 17, parcel 11, requested by Kimberly Horn, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is request to set the bond amount for the Mason Road Business Park subdivision of Lot 4, and it will become Lots 6, 7, and 8. So this is to set the bond for Lots 6, 7, and 8. Per the subdivision regulations, the developer has submitted three construction bids, an average plus the required 20% contingency, and a stamped estimate provided by the engineer bids are from Grand Fire Protection, Austin Construction, and Jones Brothers. And the engineer's estimate comes to $128,239.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. Previously on all engineers' estimates, we asked for documents to be signed and stamped by the engineer, and that's not been done on this particular document.
Mr. Coats, that was my fault. I just gave you the summary sheet, but I do have a stamped copy at my office. We do have signed stamped estimates.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to accept the bond amount at 128,239.
We have a motion to accept the stated bond amount. Do we have a second?
Our second.
Do we have a second?
Can we discuss this for a second? So on this sign.
Yeah, historically, we like to make sure that they're all signed, so they're known coming from a known vendor and a signature. It makes it a legal document. And the front sheet, the Kimberly Horn sheet, will be stamped by the engineer, showing that he's agreeing with it, and then staff can agree with that. If a misleaguish has got a stamped document, I'm settled to that.
Bring it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Next items. We're going back to the amendments, Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Back to number nine. Amendment to zoning ordinance, amend 5.056.1D and amend 5.056.2D. Amend or remove exclusions in overlay district presented by Mayor Cole. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So the draft ordinance that's in your packet addresses Part A of each district. So there's two overlay districts, and they're broken down separately in the zoning ordinance. And one is the Murfreesboro Road-Waldron Road Overlay District. The other one is south of I-24, so that's just called the Waldron, South Waldron Overlay District, called the South Waldron. So the ordinance addresses Section A of each of those, and there's a sentence in there that currently says if there's no building addition of 50% or more, then they're exempt from the current architectural regulations or overlay district standards. So in this draft, that sentence is just taken out of both sections. The rest of the paragraph is left intact. So I don't -- I thought two weeks ago there was some discussion about, did it actually show up in two places for a total of four? Two in the Murfreesboro Road-Waldron and two in the South Waldron. I haven't found the second location. I don't know that it does, but we'll have that ready and solid by next month. So that's sort of the.
Summary of it.
Yeah, I mean, this one, it just takes out, you just remove the sentence.
So removing that automatic exemption from there. Nick, have you had a chance to review this?
Not this one. I thought that we were going to revisit it at the workshop in -- what month are we in? Help me out.
In April.
Yeah, in April. That along with the next one that we were going to do and have that ready to go. Help me out here. There was discussion at the workshop, I think, about if we wanted to deal with the variance aspect of this at this point, and I didn't know if we -- have you all received any comments from board members on anything?
No, sir.
So there was that lingering part of the ordinance that allowed for variances to the overlay district, and we can deal with that now in this same ordinance, or we can deal with that later and just take this out now. Doesn't matter.
I make a motion that we defer this until legal can review the amendments.
We have a motion on the table to defer until legal can take a look at everything?
Yeah, I'll get with staff on it, and I would suggest that we -- that at the workshop, we have something to give you guys.
Yeah, I didn't think we were even going to vote on this tonight.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Because we were trying to get a draft of this. We were just discussing it at the workshop.
Okay. We have a motion for deferral at this point. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We will discuss that at length at workshop. And item number 10, amendment to the zoning ordinance, amend 4.070, standards for signs, prohibit billboards, and define billboards as off-site signs, presented by Mr. Logan. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So staff is still working together to hammer out the details of the wording on this one. And so we plan to have a 98% final draft, pending you all's input at the workshop on April 16th. We're real close on this one, so I think just a little bit more time, it'll be ready to move forward.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion at the workshop on both of these.
And can Mr. Logan make the request for deferral, or do we need to vote on that?
So we make a motion to defer to the next workshop?
We have a motion. We have a motion to defer to the next one's work.
For staff to continue to do what they're doing.
We have a motion to defer until next month and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number 12. Discussion of the Laverne Land Use and Transportation Plan. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this, we left in here so I could just announce to you all that on the 16th, Volker will be here, and they're the consultant that has been assisting and writing the land use and transportation plan. So I've made arrangements with them, and they'll be here the night of the workshop. I think I would say 15 minutes, maybe 20, that they'll want to talk. So just to notify you all that they'll be here to give a presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Leach, were you able to talk to them about some of the changes we had discussed you wanted to make?
I haven't spoken with them except regarding the transportation plan. I do have some edits to send to them, so they'll I do have some edits to send to them, so they'll get those and hopefully have something incorporated by, you know, when they come to the workshop or shortly thereafter. Of course, everyone here has received that land use plan, so if you have any comments that you would like incorporated, you can email those to Boer, myself, and we'll compile them and provide them to Volker so they can take those into consideration before they give the presentation.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments for staff? And our final item, bonds and letters of credit. Mr. Leach.
In your packet, you'll have a copy of our current outstanding bonds. The only one that is subject to change at this moment is one for B&amp;F Development from Southern Bank in the amount of $8,000 -- or, excuse me, $81,850. They have -- I've already spoken with their bank representative today. They're drafting up a new letter of credit. They'll extend that for one year. That's the only substantiative update, other than a few more houses have been completed in the interim. On a note, which is somewhat unrelated, Mason Road has been bindered now, and we're working with the engineer and the superintendent for the construction site. We're going to try to open that up at 15 miles an hour and let them work the road in for a couple of weeks before they top it out, and it'll be officially open. But at the moment, you can pass through.
Very good.
I spoke to Jeff Wippen and Tony earlier today. They're looking at the middle of the month. As long as they can get six days of basically no rain, they can have that paved and get that going.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.[1775.97][1775.97][music]